Meeting to order. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act PL 1975, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this regular meeting of the Board of Adjustment of the Towns of Franklin has been provided. Board members, applicant professionals, and members of the public, please speak directly into microphones so that our recording secretary can properly process minutes. Applicants and professionals, please fill out the sheet on the table when you've completed your testimony. Thank you. And we have no announcements of things to be carried, so we can begin right away with roll call.
Actually, we do have an announcement. That's why I put a final memo in front of you. Mohammed Reiman and Samina Habib, docket number ZBA 2200005. That matter is being carried to August 4th here at the Board, at the Board meeting at 7:30 PM.
Okay, I didn't consider that one because I know that if it all worked out, it should only be about a minute.
Yeah, but they're going to come back on August 4th.
Okay.
Okay.
Then we can move to the roll call.
Yes, sir. Cheryl Dethia, Alan Rich, excuse me, and Robert Shepherd all asked to be excused this evening. Rich Porcianic.
Here.
Joel Reese.
Yeah.
Gary Rosenthal.
Here.
Vaseem Verdas.
Here.
Elizabeth Clarkin. Felaz Khan.
Here.
And Chairman Thomas.
Here.
Okay, minutes of the regular meeting, May 5th, 2022, is their motion.
I'll move.
Second.
Gary Rosenthal.
Yes.
Vaseem Verdas. And Chairman Thomas.
Yes. Resolutions, Ricardo Perez, CBA 220004. We need a motion.
I'll move.
Second.
Gary Rosenthal.
Yes.
Vaseem Verdas. Chairman Thomas.
Yes. Sarwad Siddiqui, ZBA 220007.
I'll move.
Just say it in the... Sorry, she has to hear you, though.
Yeah. Second.
Richard Porcianic.
Yes.
Joel Reese.
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal.
Yes.
Chairman Thomas.
Yes. Arthur and Diane Wilmot, ZBA 220003.
I'll move.
Second.
Richard Porcianic.
Yes.
Vaseem Verdas.
Yes.
Oh, Gary, you can't first it, you can't vote.
Okay.
You have another motion?
I'll first.
Okay, so we'll put Richard first and Vaseem second, okay? Richard Porcianic said yes, Vaseem Verdas said yes, and Chairman Thomas.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, we can move on down to the first scheduled hearing. We already dealt with the first one. St. Charbel Mary Night Church, CBA 200027. D3 conditional use variances, preliminary final site plan with C variance in which the applicant proposes demolishing the existing church and daycare use as well as four of the single-family homes on the site and constructing a new 35,699 square-foot place of worship at 526 Eastern Avenue, Somerset Block 261, lots 1 through 6 in the Office Professional and R7 zone. I see Mr. Smith ready to go, so we will proceed.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, for the record, my name is Bob Smith. I'm a licensed attorney in the state of New Jersey, and I'm here tonight representing St. Charbel Mary Night Church, all of which is known to every member of the Board. You probably don't pass it every day, but probably at least once a week, on Eastern Avenue. Been here for a long, long time, providing religious services to Franklin residents and other residents. And I, with your permission, because I can't help myself, whenever I represent a religious institution, Orthodox Jews, Christians, Muslims, Hindus, I start with the same line. We manage to get an approval every time, so it's like bad luck if I don't say it. So let me say it. I'm here tonight representing God. If you deny our application, your mortal soul is in peril. And that usually kind of puts everything in perspective. We're here tonight seeking preliminary and final site plan approval, conditional use variances, perhaps a D6 variance for height, some bulk variances. We are demolishing the existing church and four of the dwelling units on the site. We're keeping up the parish house, and we're going to end up with 96 parking spaces, and right now there's about one-third of that. And also, we, for whatever reason, this number, it's like a number that just won't go away. We're not building a 35,000-square-foot church. We're building a 21,400-plus-or-minus church, all right? So just to put that in perspective, this property is in the OP and R7 zone, so it's a split-zone lot. And the point of the application, new St. Charbel for modern times. It's my intention to call several witnesses. I have to my, seated to my left, Father Simon, who is the pastor of St. Charbel. I have to my right, Mr. Remo, who is our licensed professional engineer. We have a traffic expert who may be known to the town, Lee Klein. We have our architect, Mike Campbell, and we also have our planner, Beth McManus, and all with different functions, as you know. So with your permission, I'd like to ask that Father Simon be called and sworn so that he can testify. Father Simon.
Father Simon, if you'd just raise your right hand. Do you swear that testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Father Simon, if you would, for the record, by whom are you employed and in what capacity?
I'm pastor of St. Charbel Church. That's part of the parque of St. Mary's of Brooklyn. And we are here for the new project, new church.
Okay. And how long have you been the pastor at this church?
I've been here for four years.
Okay. And if you know, how long has the church been there?
It's been over 35 years, since 1980.
Okay, terrific. And why do we need a new church?
So there are three reasons. First, if you go into the building, you see it's, we've been patching it here and there. It's deteriorating, need to be fixed up, so the better way is just to demolish and build new. Second reason is, we need to serve our elders and handicap. If you go to the building, you have a hall, but then you have to go steps down to the church, and for the elders and handicap, it's really hard. And more than that, we cannot have an elevator or anything else that's helping the situation. So we need to have a church and a hall that's all on the same level, so our people can go in and out, and it's up to code. And the third reason is, we need to have a bigger parking lot. Many of our parishioners park on the streets, so we need to take this traffic out from the street into the parking lot. So this way, we have a better looking from the outside and inside, a better serving our community, and at the same time, less traffic on the street, and put them all in the parking.
And if you would, would you describe for the Board what activities will occur at the church during a weekly schedule?
So first, I want to say, we have our parishioners, friends, and neighbors of St. Charbel that are here to support us.
This is not a room full of objectors, do you know?
No, no, no.
Okay.
You can raise your hands. See? Okay.
Thank you.
So you know who we are. So as a church, you know, we're an eastern Catholic church, based in the Middle East. All these parishioners who migrated back in the 1970s, 80s, even before, coming together, having the spiritual life and the social life, coming together with their children, learning about their heritage and their faith. So the building, we have a hall, a church, and classes for our kids. The church is used for our worship. The hall is used for our social activities and coming together as one family. And the classes are used for our children to learn more about their heritage and their faith. So this is the building, the complex, we need, and of course, a big parking lot to park. So coming together as a community, living their faith in this beautiful township. Our parishioners are all US citizens, and they're trying hard to be part of the society, community. We have engineers, teachers, professors, policemen, government agents. They're all contributing to this great country. And as usual, they all came here for the big dream, and now they're part of this diverse culture country.
How many seats are we planning in the church?
275 to 280 seats.
So I'm sure the Board would ask the question.
Of course.
Are you anticipating any major new growth in the church's size, in terms of number of parishioners?
The church is an ethnic church. So as I said, the from the Middle East, majority are Lebanese. So this is the community coming together here. So it's not a church that's, of course, it's open to everyone, but because of our ethnic ethnicity, having the mass in English and in Arabic language, it's really hard for people from the outside to join. So it's more as our community, and the only thing we're building because it's really in a bad condition, that's all.
Thank you very much, Father. Father Simon's open for questions.
Any Board questions? In your operations, I'm assuming you're going to have multiple masses?
Usually, we have on Saturday mass at 5:00 PM and Sunday mass 11:00 AM, and that's it.
Okay, and then you're going to continue the daycare?
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
We just already talked to them, finalized the process. They'll be leaving whenever their new location is ready, and I think it's helped because they're doing some work with the Somerset also, they're not done yet.
And then how many, your services are going to be Sundays, or is there a Saturday one?
Saturday, 5:00 PM, one mass, and Sunday, 11:00 AM, that's it.
And then during the week?
There's nothing.
Small?
So we usually have a weekday mass at 10:00 AM. We do it, and that's what we do every day. What we're eliminating is the daycare, so there's no traffic, no people coming, you know, this is less.
And I'm just reviewing this for the record. I know I've been to funerals there, so I'm assuming you're continuing funerals and weddings, normal activities associated with?
Yeah, that's part of the church life, yes.
Besides the masses, Father, how about the kitchen facilities?
The kitchen, we already have a kitchen now, so we're just trying to make sure it's up to code and that we use it when we have our social activity, like usually on the weekends. That's it.
Father, how many, how many members do you have?
We have around 496 families total.
And how many come to each service usually?
So we have around 300 people total that show up, you know, on Saturday and Sunday. So they're split, so it's not all one mass.
300 total for Saturday and Sunday, not?
Well, yeah.
Not 300 Saturday?
No.
300 Sunday?
No. You know, usually, these days, we don't, you never have 100% people show, right? So then now, according to the statistics, around 20%, 30%, unless you have a big feast like Christmas, Easter, that's where the bigger numbers show up.
I assume you're going to continue the festival in the spring?
Yes, this is one of the major, you know, funds for the church, yes.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I think it may help, in my report, starting on page three, I have about eight, kind of our standard questions that we pretty much ask every place of worship. So Mr. Smith, could you just maybe go down those questions? And I think some of them, again, are in the record in the effect that I put your responses in my report, but it may help, I think, for the public and for the Board to hear their answer.
And just double-checking, that's the April 11th, 2022 memo?
Yes.
Okay.
And it'd be, it's the first comment, starting on page three, A through G. If you could just run through those.
Sure.
Because again, these are kind of the standard questions we ask every place of worship.
Absolutely. So 1A, does the existing church contain a fellowship hall?
Yes, of course.
Of course, yes. Yes. If so, what is the current square footage?
I'll ask the architect.
We have Mr. Campbell here who can give you the current square footage. And such clarification, as important as it may, help the Board consider the relative increases in traffic generation and required parking. So that question was asked, and the applicant's response was to cite the square footage of the fellowship hall in the proposed building, not whether there was a fellowship hall in the existing. So the answer tonight is, you do have a fellowship hall?
Okay.
In the existing building.
And we'll wait to hear from the architect, I guess, on that.
On the square footage, yeah, that'll be fine.
Okay.
All right, 1B, the applicant should address the intended use of the fellowship hall and the timing of such use. For example, would it be used while the sanctuary is in use during services, either for overflow or other purposes? And you point out that the response that we gave you was the fellowship hall is for activities used by parishioners after the divine liturgy at the mass. People gather to have lunch on Sundays or coffee hour. It is the time of social recreation. So I guess the question that you're asking is, would you have church services there as overflow? Is that the question?
Yes, that's the follow-up question.
Is there any overflow of parishioners sitting in the fellowship hall while the mass is being set?
That's only, we see it on Good Friday.
Good Friday, let's see.
But now with the church capacity, I don't think we'll need it anymore.
The new church will have more seats?
Yes.
Okay. So you don't see any overflow, you're not foreseeing that. Item 1C, beyond the depiction on the floor plans, the application makes no mention of the 10 proposed classrooms or their intended use. The applicant needs to explain, the use of the 10 classrooms may affect the calculation of required parking. And we previously responded, the 10 classrooms are for our children who arrive on Saturdays from 1:30 to 4:45 PM to learn their native language, Arabic, followed with a break, 30-minute snack, then religious education. The children and their families attend the mass at 5:00 PM. The gathering is once a week. If the classrooms are limited to the uses described above, then it would be my determination that the classrooms are necessary, are accessory, rather, to the place of worship use and do not generate additional parking requirements under the town ordinance. So I think what Mr. Healy's asking for is your acknowledgement that the children's use is in conjunction with the 5 o'clock mass. They're early to learn something, and then they go to mass, is that true?
Correct.
Did he answer the question?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. 1D, would the new place of worship contain a daycare, or would that operation cease at the site? And you've already answered, it's ceasing, correct?
Yes.
And you say in here, applicant's response, there'll be no daycare in the future, lease will end by July 1st, 2022. We're not leasing the place anymore. They have already found another location to move to. So I think that answers that question. 1E, the applicant should explain whether any special holiday events would be anticipated at the site and the nature dates, expected building occupancy, as well as traffic generation and parking needs associated with any such events. Applicant's response, as the traffic engineer noticed in his report, the only big event we have is in the second week of June, it's the festival. Every year, the festival is a way to recall our heritage, also is a source of income for the church. And I believe that answers the question?
I believe so.
Okay. And then 1F, the applicant should explain whether any part of the facility would be rented out. Applicant's response, none of the facility will be rented out. It is exclusively for the use of the parish and parishioners.
Correct.
I think that answers the question pretty thoroughly. And finally, 1G, what is the intended use of the existing dwelling at the corner of Franklin Boulevard and Blake Avenue that is proposed to be retained? Applicant's response, 10 Franklin Boulevard is the church house where the priest resides, and that would be you, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so it's the parish home for the pastor.
Thank you.
I think we answered the moment.
You did.
Thank you. All right.
Just one comment in addition to that. We have a number of religious institutions that have special events and have to work. Is there any reason that this one needs to be required to work with the town in terms of traffic control or any other measures like we have with several other institutions?
If I recall correctly, they submit for a special event permit, so.
They already are?
They already are.
Okay. Any other questions or anything? We would normally, we'll do this. We're all open to the public, and if anyone has any questions for this witness concerning his testimony, this would be the time to do it. This is not a time to make a statement or anything like that, but just to ask questions or clarify, to help us clarify information. Okay, don't see any, next.
Okay.
Just a moment. Yes, come on up to the mic. We need your name and address.
My name is Christy Low. I live on 238 Blake Avenue, so just down the road from the church. C-H-R-I-S-T-I-E, last name is L-O-W. So every year, the church has the festival, and every year, there's a lot of parking, right? And so we have typically applied to the police to actually have one side of the road closed off, just because when it's parked on both sides, it is really hard to access our houses. My question is, is the church anticipating to actually have the festival indoors, or is it, will it still be outdoors and therefore within the parking lot and, you know, continuing with the kind of the traffic situation that we have every year during the three-day festival period?
So since we have a big hall now to use, many of these people will be sitting inside, and we'll have only a partial part of the parking lot will have the festival outside. But that's why we have the bigger parking lot where all these cars can park in, so we have less cars on the streets. So by maintaining from 39 to 96, so this way, we have cars in the parking, we're not using for the festival, just part of it that's closer to the building.
So let me just follow up. Would it be fair to say, in your view, this is going to be a much better situation for the surrounding neighborhood?
Oh, yeah, of course.
And as a matter of fact, we have no objection if the neighbors ask for the police to have one side, no parking on both.
They're already doing it, and we're happy.
But we have no problem with it going on in the future, too.
Of course.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Then we'll close again to the public, and go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My next witness is Mr. Mark Remo, seated to my right. Mr. Remo is our engineer. I'd ask him to be sworn so that he can give testimony.
Mr. Remo, please raise your right hand. Do you swear that testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Remo, for the record, by whom are you employed and in what capacity?
I'm employed with Remo Engineering. I'm also a licensed professional engineer in New Jersey, New York, several other states, and Washington DC. I'm also a licensed professional planner in New Jersey and a certified municipal engineer. I have over 37 years' experience in all aspects of site plan and subdivision design.
We'll accept your credentials, and you're testifying presently now as what the engineer?
Professional engineer.
Engineer, as an engineer.
We have another planner, actually.
So if you would, Mr. Remo, we'd appreciate it very much if you'd describe the existing area, and then, secondly, what is it that we're proposing in the new St. Charbel?
Sure. So the existing site, the property is, that's being developed, is known as lots 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6 in Block 261. Essentially, the whole block is 261. It's also known as 526 Eastern Avenue. The site is located at the northwest corner of the intersection of Franklin Boulevard and Eastern Avenue. The site also has frontages on Reeve Street and Blake Avenue. The property is rectangular in shape, and the lot width is about 204 feet along Eastern Avenue, 385 feet along Franklin Boulevard, 345 feet along Reeve Street, and approximately 199 feet along Blake Avenue. The total area of all the lots encompassing the site is 72,527 square feet, or 1.66 acres. Currently, the site is developed and contains a one-story brick church building and an associated asphalt-paved parking lot containing 36 parking spaces. The site also contains five single-family dwellings and associated driveways. The existing dwelling on Lot 2 was recently demolished, so there's actually four out there now. The remainder of the site is predominantly grass and some scattered trees. The topography of the site moderately slopes generally in an easterly direction towards the intersection of Eastern Avenue and Franklin Boulevard. The site is located in the OP Office Professional and the R7 Residential Zone districts. Lot 1, which is the lot that contains the existing church, is actually located in the OP zone, and the existing houses are actually in the R7 zone. Uses surrounding the site are office buildings to the east and west along Eastern Avenue. Also, there's single-family dwellings along Eastern Avenue, Franklin Boulevard, Blake Street, and also Reeve Street. The applicant for the project proposes to consolidate all of the lots and demolish four of the dwellings and the existing church building, and construct a church building and an asphalt-paved parking lot to serve the development. A total of 96 parking spaces is proposed. The church building will have a floor of approximately 20,240 square feet and contain 275 seats. The proposed building will be set back 13.54 feet from Eastern Avenue right-of-way, 19.17 feet from the Franklin Boulevard right-of-way, 21.50 feet from the Reeve Street right-of-way, and 249 feet from the Blake Street right-of-way. And those proposed dimensions are actually, the county had requested some right-of-way dedication along Eastern Avenue and also on Franklin Boulevard. On Eastern Avenue, they asked for five-feet dedication. Franklin Boulevard was eight-feet dedication. So it actually lessened the setback distances. As far as access, the, again, the property will contain 96 parking spaces, and that includes four handicap spaces. The dimensions of the stalls are 19 by 18 feet, and the driveway whiffs are, and aisles are 24 feet wide. Access and egress will be from Franklin Boulevard, Reeve Street, Blake Street, by a 24-foot-wide two-directional driveway. Left turn egress will be restricted at the Franklin Boulevard driveway. That was a request from the county.
All right, and just FYI, we did a pre-application meeting with the Somerset County Planning Board at the suggestion of Franklin staff, which was a great idea, because they pointed out what they would be requiring on their streets, and we believe we're in conformance with what they want. So it was a great idea to go ahead, and we're not going to have a left, as I understand it. If you're coming down Franklin Boulevard, you're not going to be able to make a left into the site, which currently.
Oh, and a left. Left out, actually.
I'm sorry, a left out.
Yeah, you can't, you can't make a left out of the Franklin Boulevard.
Thank you. All right, and I interrupted you.
Sure. So as far as drainage, we're proposing drainage improvements for the project, and that includes the construction of a subsurface detention facility, and that's located beneath the parking lot, and also the construction of storm sewer system to collect all surface runoff and direct it to. surface runoff and direct it to the detention facility. The detention facility will have a capacity of thirteen thousand three hundred and fifty-seven cubic feet. It will consist of thirty feet by a hundred and fifty-three feet by three-foot-deep Brentwood Stormwater Storage Modules. The outflow structure will control the runoff from the site to the pre-development rates, actually, to lessen the pre-development rates. The outflow pipe from the facility will connect to a proposed inlet on Franklin Boulevard. Surface runoff from the site will be directed and controlled, and water quality will be provided for all the runoff, and so, since we're providing detention, there should be no detrimental impacts on the downstream areas. As far as utilities, the development will be served by existing gas, water, electric on Franklin Boulevard and sanitary sewer facilities located on Eastern Avenue. These utilities will be extended into the site. With regard to lighting, the proposed parking lot lighting will consist of fifteen-foot-high pole-mounted luminaires located in the parking lot. These are kind of a downlight, shoebox-style downlights, so they won't be directed outward towards adjacent roadways and properties, and they'll also be screened appropriately. With regard to landscaping, we're proposing shade trees along Eastern Avenue, Franklin Boulevard, Reeve Street, and Blake Avenue. Flowering-type trees will be planted at all the curved islands throughout the site, and various types of shrubs will be planted along the building foundation and along the parking lot perimeter. Evergreen screening-type trees will be planted around the trash enclosure to screen the parking lot from the adjacent property, properties, and also to screen the trash from you, from just people driving by on Franklin Boulevard. All the other areas that will be disturbed will be grassed. As far as variances go, a conditional use variance is required, houses of worship are permitted in the OP and the R seven zone, provided they meet certain criteria. Minimum lot setback required is fifty feet, so we need a variance for that, where thirteen point five-four feet is proposed on Eastern Avenue, nineteen point one-seven is proposed on Franklin Boulevard, and twenty-one point five feet is proposed on Reeve Street. Minimum driveway width required is twenty-six feet, where we're providing twenty-four feet. Minimum landscape buffer required is fifteen feet or twenty-five feet, where we're providing five feet. Maximum building coverage required is twenty percent, where twenty point five percent is proposed. Maximum impervious coverage is required is sixty percent in the R seven zone and forty-five percent in the OP zone, and we're proposing seventy-two point two percent. Maximum building height required is thirty-five feet, where thirty-nine point two feet is proposed, and the minimum parking space is required is three hundred and sixty spaces, where ninety-six spaces are proposed. As far as outside agency approvals, the soil erosions and sediment control plan has been prepared and submitted to the Somerset Union Soil Conservation District. We have reviewed, we have actually received some comments, so we're going to revise the plans accordingly. Site plan has also been submitted to Somerset County for their review and approve, approval, and they had sent us some additional comments back in April, so we'll address those. The site plan will also be submitted to the Delaware and Route and Canal Commission for their approval. As far as regulatory review comments that we received, we received comments from the township engineer in a letter dated April eleventh, twenty twenty-two. The applicant, again, will address the comments accordingly and work with the township engineer. We also received comments from the township planner in a letter dated April eleventh. We have received the latest comments from the Township Environmental Commission in a letter dated April seventh, twenty twenty-two. We've also received the latest comments from the County of Somerset Planning Board, Somerset County Planning Board, in a letter dated April twenty-six, twenty twenty-two. We have received the latest comments from the Somerset Union Soil Conservation District in an email dated April eleventh, twenty twenty-two. And again, the applicant plans to work with the township, the county, the Soil Conservation District, and all the consultants, and address all the comments.
Just stop for a second. What I saw in Father's memo, statement concerning jurisdiction, and I thought Mr. Healy came to the conclusion that we did not have to submit to Delaware and. Does that ring a bell? All right. Hold on one sec.
Would not be me.
That would not be you.
All right. Maybe, maybe, I think you may have been, I think I may have opined that it wasn't within a thousand feet of the Danard Canal, so you didn't need the Township Historic Commission review.
Maybe we, maybe we expanded that.
Actually, just to clear it up, we actually submitted the plans to the Delaware and Route and Canal Commission, and they came back and considered it a major project, so we have to resubmit, and based on major project criterias.
Yeah, checking my report, that's, that's what I said. You do not have to go to our Township Historic Committee.
Thank you. So, Mr. Remo's open to questions, unless you have more.
No, that's, that's fine with my testimony, if you have any questions, or if you want me to go through anything in the letters.
Just so to confirm, I guess, we didn't hear that you can't comply with any of the staff reports, so I guess that means you're going to comply with all staff reports.
Is that what that means?
Because typically, if there were something that you can't comply with, you would address it to the board.
That includes the fire inspector?
I, I think the fire inspector's letter had no, no comments, actually.
I think there was some comments, but I can't. The report had some mixed comments, and that really, you know, I think what Mr. Healy's saying, we should say either we can or we can't comply with the comments.
Yeah, I mean, there were a number of technical comments in the engineer report. My last report, I think you had mostly complied, but I think there may be a few things. So again, typically, if you, if you can comply, if your intent is to comply with all the staff reports, you would state that to the board, and that'd be a condition of the board's approval.
That was, yeah. Oh, you can't say yes. Okay, so, to clarify, Mr. Remo, let's go through the report and decide what we can, Father, say yes to the dress or no to the dress. So it's clear what we are saying yes to. So, let's take a look at CME, the engineering report. And we appreciate your help on this, Mr. Healy. It looks to me like the first page is just what we reviewed, the second page, the project overview, we don't have any issues with. Section B, general site improvements, is a description, and also, also a list of what variances people think are, what CME believes may be needed, including the interior driveways at twenty-six feet versus the twenty-four we're providing, and there was some discussion of angled parking, but we're not suggesting that we do angled parking, all right? And he just simply points out you need to request a variance. Number nine, he says, make sure you request a buffer variance. Number ten, maximum building coverage, which Mr. Remo addressed, that we are asking for it. The maximum impervious coverage, we are requesting that at the seventy-two point two percent coverage. Number twelve, the engineer indicated a variance might be needed for maximum building height. And Mr. Remo recited the fact that the current plans provide for thirty-nine feet and a decimal point compared to the thirty-five required, and that might be a question better saved for the architect, all right? Number thirteen is, is a variance required for parking. We understand that, and we are requesting it. Lot numbers, which is number fourteen, we don't have any issue with that. Statement, item fifteen is a statement that the parish house is to remain. And then sixteen, the applicant should perform the following additional off-site improvements, and this is, again, a yes or no, because the applicant's engineer has noted that all sidewalk along the property frontage will be reconstructed. Therefore, the handicap ramps at the intersection of Franklin Boulevard and Blake Avenue, Blake Avenue and Reeve Street, Reeve Street and Eastern Avenue, and Franklin Boulevard and Eastern Avenue should be constructed to the latest ADA standards, and this offer defers to the county regarding a review of ADA ramps. We agree with that? We are, we're going to meet the ADA.
Mr. Smith, let me, let me, just over here.
Yeah.
Let me just make a suggestion. So, is it your intent to try, is it your intent to finish tonight, or, my understanding there were, there were a few outstanding issues.
Our staff called today and said they had some issues on the engineering side, and they wanted to talk to Mr. Remo with Mr. Russo, Darren Russo, who's your engineer for CME, and we have, we've talked to Father Simon, and we have no problem with that, which would mean that we would probably get to everybody but the planner tonight.
Okay.
And we would carry over to your next meeting.
The reason I ask that, because there were some comments in my report related to variances, like, that addressed the calculation of, there's some missing information in the, in the plans, that I can't make a final determination on the parking calculation.
Right.
So, that alone, the board can't really decide on a variance if they don't know ultimately what that required, and similarly, I needed more information for the building height. Again, they don't know what ultimately what the building height is, so they can't make a decision tonight, anyway. So I bring that up. Would it be? Where are these comments? Let me just finish real quick.
Sure.
There's four more pages, and these comments get, and these comments get progressively more technical.
Okay.
So, we're going to be here all night long if you were to go through four pages of highly technical engineering. So what I suggest is, if you're going to come back, perhaps in the meantime, go over these comments with your client and the engineer, and if there are any things, any comments in here that they can't comply with, plus you'll have the chance to meet with the engineer, then you can address that to the board. I think that'd be more efficient.
Yeah, our only concern would be that we do it expeditiously, and I understand that the engineer comes in every Tuesday to the, to the town.
Yeah, you're, and he's.
So, could we set up a meeting for this coming Tuesday with Mr. Russo?
Yes, absolutely.
And staff, and get any engineering issues resolved.
They, they, they make themselves available when they, when we ask them to be available, so.
And Mr. Remo, are you available on Tuesday? And Father, you're available on Tuesday? So, we'll put them in a room, we'll lock the door, and only when white smoke comes out will we release them. If that works for everybody.
And then, and then hopefully.
I don't think you'd need me, right?
What?
I'd love you to be there, only because it's your parish's money that may be involved in some of the. Okay, all right. So, the answer is yes. Well, instead of going into minute and odious detail, we'll have everybody meet with you and Mr. Russo. And Mr. Remo on Tuesday.
Okay, sounds good.
And hammer that out, and then hopefully, we get in ninety percent of our case tonight, maybe saving the planner until next, the August meeting, and hopefully, we get to get on and finish after there's been a cosmic agreement between the titanic forces of engineering and planning.
Okay. May make sense to have the architect there as well, because again, some of the calculations involve changes to his plans, his or her plans, so I would need to see, so it may help to have, so we're all on the same page.
Mr. Campbell is Tuesday available for you? What time would you like to have?
Well, typically, we meet in the morning, it'd be ten, ten-thirty, but it could be early afternoon. We can make it as early as ten o'clock.
Ten AM? Mark, ten AM? And Father, you'll have somebody there at ten AM? Okay.
I think it would be also wise, the next time we meet, to have the, make sure the engineer is here, even though he's started his testimony, because if, it's obviously going to change, so there may be questions.
Well, I have everybody back, hopefully, at the August meeting, and.
We can get that, we can get that as we wrap up.
Okay. All right, so, are there any other questions for Mr. Remo? Otherwise, we'll.
Do you have, and you do have a planner? Okay.
Yes.
I don't have any more questions, no.
Yeah, and we're going to probably hold the planner, because as you said, there may be a slight change in the variances. So, our third witness is Mr. Lee Klein, our traffic expert.
Okay, one moment. I, I will hold any questions from the board or myself until you have the meeting and resolve the issues, and, and we will not, at this time, open to the public for questions to the engineer, until they have a complete report at the next meeting to listen to, and.
Great.
And then we can go on to the next witness.
All right, I'd also, Mr. Lee Klein, be sworn so he can give testimony.
Mr. Klein, do you swear the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? I do. Thank you.
Mr. Klein, for the record, by whom are you employed and in what capacity?
I'm the principal of Klein Traffic Consulting, one-five-six Walker Road, West Orange, New Jersey. I'm a professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. My license is current. I'm also a nationally certified professional traffic operations engineer, and that certification is also current. Klein Traffic has been in business since December of twenty thirteen, and prior to that, I've worked for other consulting firms. I've been admitted as an expert in traffic and parking at well over a hundred planning and zoning boards.
We accept his credentials.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Thomas. So, as a part of your preparation for tonight's application, did you evaluate any traffic issues and parking issues associated with the site? And if you did, what did you discover?
I developed a traffic engineering and parking evaluation report dated March seventh, twenty twenty-two, and in that report, I studied the current operations of the church, both on Sunday and Saturday, looking at the peak activities at the church with parking. I also looked at the expansion from two hundred and twenty seats to two hundred and eighty seats, and did a trip generation calculation for that to determine whether it'd be a significant increase in traffic, and then I also opined as to the, the number of seats, number of parking spaces provided, and the adequacy of that parking. So in that report, basically, I concluded that we've got proposed two hundred and eighty seats, and as you heard before from the father, the activities in the congregation room will be alone, there won't be a simultaneous activity in the fellowship room, so the two hundred and eighty seats is the maximum number of people that will be at the church, and you divide that by three, and we get ninety-three parking spaces required, where we're proposing ninety-six. I also looked at the circulation of the site, the driveways, the width of the driveways. We're proposing twenty-four-foot-wide drive aisles with nine-by-eighteen parking spaces. That's an industry standard, RSIS, the dimensions of parking uses actually a twenty-three-foot-wide two-way drive aisle. Your ordinance requires twenty-six feet, and we were asking for a variance for that two-foot difference, so we're proposing twenty-four, which is adequate for this type of use, low turnover, people come once to the service, leave, another group comes and leaves. It's not like a convenience store, a shopping center, or even an office building with visitors, where people are constantly coming and going, and you might want a wider drive aisle. Also, the narrower drive aisle reduces the impervious coverage, which is good for drainage and things like that. So, my conclusions were that the parking that we're proposing, the ninety-six spaces, is adequate to serve the needs of the church, meets the requirement for the sanctuary section itself, and that there should not be an impact to the neighbors. As a matter of fact, we're going to be taking some driveways away by removing some of the homes, I think four homes we're removing, so we'll be picking up some additional space on the street that will, that will be used by the neighbors all the time and could be used for overflow, depending on how the, the side of the street is marked for the festival. As far as the trip generation goes, the difference between the two hundred and eighty seats proposed and the existing two hundred and twenty seats on a Saturday, it's about twenty-eight additional trips, and then on a Sunday, it's about thirty-one additional trips. The Institute of Transportation Engineers and the New Jersey Department of Transportation say that a significant increase in traffic is greater than one hundred peak-hour trips. This is twenty-eight and thirty-one. It's less than a significant increase, so we didn't do a full traffic engineering study with traffic counts and traffic analysis, because the, the increase in traffic would be insignificant, and, yeah, insignificant. And, yeah, insignificant. So again, my conclusions are that the proposed parking of 96 parking spaces is adequate to serve the 280 seats at one per three, and that the traffic won't be an impact, the additional traffic for the additional 60 seats will not be an impact to the area, and there should not be an impact to operations of the intersections.
Mr. Klein's available for questions.
Anything from the board?
A question I have, does the church have any agreement with the adjoining medical center to use their parking lot on Sundays when they're closed for overflow parking?
My understanding, and I subject to being corrected by anybody, is that the adjacent medical property has never objected to some of our parishioners parking there, but I think the only time that it actually happens is during the festival. Yes.
Any other questions?
All right, this we. Mr. Campbell, I just have.
I wanted to just clarify, because the pastor had indicated that there's a church service only at 11 a.m. on Sunday, and Mr. Klein's report indicates that there's services at 9 a.m. and 11. Just want to confirm.
Yeah, we just added that mass during coronavirus time, so we have less people 11, that's all, but now it's canceled.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. Of these 96 parking spots, are any of them going to be for EV charging? Curious.
I don't, I don't think you have a choice. I think it's state law. Four spaces will have EV charging.
So perhaps an obvious question. So you evaluated the peak hours of the church, which is on the weekend, and you didn't evaluate the peak hour of the road, which is the morning and afternoon during a weekday. And I'm assuming the reason is that church activity is going to be non-existent or minimal?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, any other questions?
Yeah, sorry, I do have one question. You're, we're seeking a parking variance here, correct?
Yes.
The EV legislation allows for a two-for-one credit. Is that considered in your parking calculation?
I don't believe it was, actually.
No, I think the application was made a good time before that legislation came into play.
Yeah, we go back a while on this application. So it probably was not considered. We did not get credits, but we'll check that out. I mean, that's a Tuesday topic, either we get credits for it, maybe we don't need a variance.
If you, no, you'd still need a variance, but the reason, so this comes up with houses of worship. The, when a house of worship has a worship area and a fellowship hall, for the purpose of calculating the parking requirements, we include both spaces. But the applicant has testified that they're not going to use both spaces at the same time. Typically, in those situations, the board may decide to make that a condition of the approval. You know, I think the traffic engineer indicated a parking requirement of 93, and I think what that was based on was the total number of spaces divided by three, and that's.
Number of seats, yeah.
Number of seats divided by three. And that's kind of, kind of your typical standard for a house of worship is one space for every three seats. So basically, that's, basically what you're testifying to is based on, you know, again, one space for every three seats is going to be adequate parking. So again, you may want to, technically, our ordinance requires a lot more, because the fellowship hall's square footage is included in our calculation. So you may want to consider having that condition again, where they both, they can't be used simultaneously.
Okay, any other questions? For this witness, then we will open for the, to the public. If you're out there and you have any questions concerning traffic, or parking, or circulation, come forward, give us your name and address.
Good evening. Shenique Davis, S-H-E-N-I-Q. Louder, I mean, higher. Shenique Davis, S-H-E-N-I-Q-U-E, Davis, 227 Blake Avenue. I have a question about the traffic study. It was conducted in August 2020, August 15th and 16th of 2020. During that time, overall, it was different, right? It was during the pandemic, so there might have been less people attending the church services at that period of time. And I think even like a bake sale was part of the study. I'm not sure how many people would have attended the bake sale during that period. So I want to know if the traffic study is going to be updated to reflect the current number of people attending church in 2022.
I think the attendance was similar, the same, so nothing changed. Our parishioners, back in June 2020, came back to church, and we have services every Sunday, so we have the same amount of people if you come today, very similar. Because as I said, again, it's our group coming together, and that's it.
Okay, any other questions for traffic?
Hi there, David Zald, that's Z-A-L-D, at 220 Blake Avenue. And I have a question related to the number of parking slots, given that this is, part of that parking extends into what is a residential zoning. And the question essentially is, given that there is the possibility of parking at the site across from the church on Reeves, is there actually the need for the full 93 or 96 parking spots? Or would that actually be something in considering a variance that would have allowed for a smaller amount of parking slots, allowing therefore for more of a barrier between the parking and the sidewalks and neighborhood side of the street?
So I can ask Mr. Klein to respond, and then I want to throw a comment in.
The parking standard that we're trying to reach is the 280, because of what Father Simon said, that's going to be the number of people that are going to be there at one time. They'll move to the fellowship hall, so that'll be the number of seats. Divide that by three, we get 93 required. So we're proposing that on-site. We can't always rely on off-site parking. If there was a festival or something, and we needed to park at St. Peter's next door, we could do that. There'll be some parking on the street during peak times, but for the most part, we're trying to accommodate all the parking that we feel we need on-site.
So my comment is, the board and the applicant have to kind of balance this. One of the concerns we had from the neighborhood is, we don't want, new church, new parking lot, we don't want to see additional parking on our streets, on Blake and Reeve, et cetera. So you're trying to make sure you have adequate parking on-site, so that you're discouraging off-site parking, or, or on-street parking, if you want to put it that way. And that's kind of the balance. The reason you have that standard is because it's kind of nationally agreed upon as the right standard for churches. And it's not that, listen, it's, it's cheaper for the applicant not to put in the parking, all right? So if you were trying to go small, you would reduce the amount of parking. But you're trying to go big in the sense that you're trying to be respectful of the neighborhood, so that you can accommodate the parking on the site.
Mike, Mark, would you give a brief rundown what buffering requirements might be required between the street and the parking lot and the residential zone part?
Well, the only buffering requirement that applies here is the 15-foot buffering requirement. That's the conditional use standard for places of worship. Typically, those come into play around the perimeter of the property, when you have a place of worship adjoining a residence, so you want to have the evergreens and the fencing. You know, our ordinance doesn't say that it doesn't apply along the street. So, you know, technically, they're required to have a 15-foot buffer around the perimeter of their property. But I think Mr. Smith brings up, I think, a perfectly good and reasonable point, which is I think it is a trade-off. You know, I think they're trying to address concerns that, you know, I'm sure they have heard from the neighbors about having enough parking on their own site, so they're not parking within the neighborhood. So that part of their application is, they purchase these additional properties and are providing a good deal more parking on, on their own site. The trade-off is, in order to do that, they don't have the full 15-foot buffer around the perimeter. They have kind of more of a standard parking layout where they have, you know, I think it varies from three to five feet, and they have some shrubs kind of around, around the outside to screen the headlights, kind of a standard parking lot. They don't, but they don't have a 15-foot wide buffer with six-foot evergreens. I guess they could do that, but if they did that, they're going to lose a lot of the parking that they're proposing. Again, I think, I think Mr. Smith is correct. I think it's a trade-off that the board needs to, you know, should think of. Maybe there's some combination, you know.
Okay, just so everyone understands that. There are no other questions. Again, I guess we'll close to the public as far as this witness goes, and then you can continue.
I'd ask that Mike Campbell, our architect, he called and sworn so that he can give testimony.
Mr. Campbell, if you just raise your right hand, you swear the testimony about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Campbell, let me ask you, is there any way you can push the display boards back further and turn them more this way so the people in the audience can, no, no, go in that direction and turn the boards so that the board can see them, but hopefully the public can see it as well? Because they are gorgeous. Let's share them with everybody. Can you, can you see it? Yeah, that's probably a good idea. Why don't you move over there and kind of face, make it parallel to the wall, so everybody can see. Do you have a helper? We have volunteers here.
Good.
All right, Mr. Campbell.
And I was all comfortable over there.
It's okay. So listen, if you have an A pin, it'd be great if you'd mark these as we go through them. Why don't you mark that A1 and today's date, which is July the 7th? These are all prepared by your office, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. So my question to you is, so what's it going to look like?
You can see, you know, we've, we've done these artist renderings, and of course, we're placing the.
Get his qualifications.
Oh, I'm sorry, 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 sorry. And by the way, did we get him sworn in? We did get him sworn in, right?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, Mr. Campbell, would you give the board the benefit of your credentials?
I guess I'm a licensed architect in New Jersey for like the past 35 years, also licensed in New Hampshire, New York, Pennsylvania, and Florida. And for almost all of that time, I've had my own practice since 1989, and my practice is almost exclusively churches, you know, probably 95% of my work.
That's fine. Thank you. So what is it going to look like?
Well, I've been involved with this project for seven, eight years. It's been a while, and a lot of iterations, but in the beginning, and as we moved along and started working with Father Simon, they gave me examples of, of the architecture from where most of the members have immigrated from. And so we are matching that, that traditional ethnic stone architecture that they're familiar with.
So what is A1 show?
A1 shows a artist rendering from the parking lot side and the side street as you approach. So it shows the entrance to the sanctuary, the corner tower, and the drive-up canopy.
And we're looking at this from Franklin Boulevard?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Nice. Did you mark the next one A2? If you're ready to go to A2.
Yeah, perhaps I should go to the floor plans to go read through a few things and answer a few questions.
Is the tower the, is it part of the building, right?
Yes, it's connected to the building.
And is that what makes it 39 feet?
No, the thing that gives us the 39 feet, and, and like I said, I've been working on this project a long time, and it was, I think it was actually pre-COVID when we had our workshop meeting here. So there's been a lot of iterations, and the height variance is, it's really just due to the configuration of the site. It's an unusual configuration. It drops off at that intersection.
And then you have a definition of height, and the definition requires you to, to do a calculation. And what do you have to do in that calculation?
So you can, well, you can see from the parking lot side, we're, we're compliant. I think we're 32 feet here, and I have my reading glasses over there, so. I think we're like 35, we are below 35 feet to the peak of the church proper from the parking lot side.
We're going to put that guy in retainer.
But, so you can see, I will. So you see, we comply from the parking lot side, and we comply with the new fellowship hall on the back elevation, but the, the property drops off at the corner here, right where the, you know, the larger building is, the church proper. And the way your ordinance is, it's, it's an averaging of the height across the back here, and that's what puts us over the 35 feet and requires a variance. It's just, it's just really for this corner of the site where the, where the property drops down.
So you can, you, basically, for 70, 80% of the site, you're conforming at the, anything that has the ground level of the parking lot. It's only in the one corner that you get into a jam because of the way in which height is defined in the local ordinance, correct?
In this, in this, in the Franklin ordinance, yes. And I believe the, the tower, the cupola, is exempt, and that is above 35 feet. Typically, in most ordinances, the, the tower or cupola element is, is exempt from that height restriction.
And suppose in your meeting with staff on Monday, or Tuesday, rather, right? It's Tuesday.
Tuesday, yeah.
They say, well, can you lower the cross by two feet? Or whatever. Is that something that could be do if it was required by staff?
It could be done, again, with the approval of my client.
Client, of course.
Yeah.
We would like to have it that high. We think it looks aesthetic, correct? Very pretty?
Yes, I think anything less, and like I said, you know, over the years, and especially the past year or two, there have been a lot of iterations, and Father Simon did request several times that I lower the building. So, so it is a lot lower than our original application. And if there was a non-conformity of a foot or two, I think we can make that work. Yeah, either by changing the building or changing the grading.
I'm saying just, we need to look at the church, because lower than that, it doesn't look any more like a church.
Before you start lowering it, let me just put this in perspective, I hope. What I heard, and tell me if I'm wrong, is the part of the facility facing basically the residential areas and most of the part along Franklin Boulevard is conforming in height.
That is correct, yes.
The part that's not conforming in height is the part that faces the corner of Easton Avenue, where there aren't three drivers in a week who are going to be looking at that church to determine how high it is above the ground. They're concerned about not getting hit by somebody going through the stoplight.
I hope they're looking ahead and not.
Thank you.
And would it be a reasonable compromise on the height variances?
Yeah, just as several people said, if you keep lowering it, it's going to start to lose its character, and it's not going to look like a church, it's not going to have the same aesthetic. You know, it sure, if you picture the same church with a, with a roof pitch that's much lower, it's going to, it's not going to look aesthetically pleasing.
Okay, and is that in the board member's package, that exhibit?
I believe so, it's the most recent, so.
Okay.
Well, it's the most recent working drawing, so.
Well, do me a favor, mark it as A2, just in case. Tonight's date.
And like I say, I'll go to the plans for a few minutes, because.
And again, is this in the, the members' packages?
I, the same plans, I don't think with all the dimensions, because we.
So please mark it as A3 at tonight's date.
We had, we put together a board package that's not the same as the working drawings.
Okay.
But kind of going back to a few things Father Simon said earlier about, you know, why the building's being replaced, it is kind of substandard construction, and, you know, it's, it's only 50, 60 years old for the original. and, you know, it's, it's only 50, 60 years old for the original building, but, uh, but if you walk through there, you know, the floor is uneven, the construction is laminated wood arches, which are embedded into the masonry, and it's really just a matter of time before the moisture from the masonry completely deteriorates the arches, and you have problems. And, uh, same thing for the, uh, the existing fellowship hall. And, uh, also, as Father Simon touched on, um, you know, building a building today is not built like building a building 60 years ago. Uh, there are requirements for, uh, handicap accessibility, and, uh, you know, just building the same building by today's standards, uh, is going to increase the footprint by, you know, 20, 30% or more, just to comply with, with what's expected in a building today. And also, I would add that, uh, again, like Father Simon said, uh, this is not to, uh, increase the intense, intensity of the use of the site, it's really just to better serve the people that are already there. It's, you know, it's a, it's a fixed community, it's, it's not like an evangelical church where they're reaching out to everybody and, and trying to grow their church, it's, it's a specific, specific religious community they're, they're serving, and, uh, and they just want to serve them better. So we have the, the new sanctuary, uh, as other testimony said, uh, 275 seats. As an architect, I wouldn't use that same standard, I would use 24 inches per person, which would give you 250 people is, you know, more comfortable seating. And even at that, um, you know, the surveys say people think a church is full at like 70%. So it's pretty rare to have a, every seat filled, every pew filled in a church, you know, it's more like 70% is, is typical, and that's the size of the, uh, of the congregation. Uh, there was a question about the fellowship hall, and that is, I think we have 4,500 square feet, and, uh, actually, the original plan was to keep the fellowship hall, uh, keep the existing, but again, because of concerns of the age of the building and the condition of the building, and also one other concern, when they, excuse me, when they calculated the grading of the site, and again, to, to current standards, um, the, the site couldn't be sloped as steeply as it is now, and it had to be sort of more leveled out as it gets to the building. So, so Mark asked me, can, you know, can we, can we raise the floor in this building over a foot? And that's not really practical, and, you know, given that and other considerations we already had, uh, the church decided to just rebuild that building. So, so the plans didn't really change, our architectural plans didn't change, but instead of saying, you know, keep the existing fellowship hall, we're replacing the existing fellowship hall. And then the, you know, the addition to that fellowship hall is a, a new, uh, kitchen that meets, you know, commercial standards for, for, for serving a, a crowd this size. And, uh, something else to note about the fellowship hall is about like 15, 20% of it is, uh, dedicated as dance floor, so, uh, so it's never going to be packed, it's kind of like the sanctuary is never going to be packed, the, uh, the fellowship hall is not going to be. And also, like I said, I, all I do is work with churches, that's all I've done for 33 years, and, uh, and whenever we've made one of these presentations, the, the parking has always been based on the, the sanctuary seating, not, I've never had an application where the parking was based on the sanctuary seating and the fellowship hall. It was always just the, uh, the sanctuary, because they're assumed to be, uh, non-simultaneous.
And again, if you'd mark that A4 in tonight's date.
Okay, and this is just the, uh, the lower level. So we, we have a new building that's 21,400 square feet, um, and that's including the, the drive-up canopy, because it's under roof, so I figured that should be counted as, as square footage. But we have a footprint of, um, just had it here, of, uh, 15,200. And, uh, the existing building is all slab-on grade, it's one level, um, so, you know, a large part of the addition to the building is actually below grade, it's not increasing the, uh, the footprint to, to 21,400. And the, the basement level is exactly the same size as the sanctuary level, and that is, uh, 6,500 square feet. So that's 6,500 seat that's below grade, 6,500 square feet that's below grade.
If you'd mark that A5? The next one is A5.
And, uh, it's just the, the upper level, which, uh, is really just a very small mezzanine. It's, it's not a place for, uh, people in the congregation to sit, it's for people in the choir, and it's just for when they're up there singing, and then they, they come to the, to the seats downstairs below. And that's also included in that, uh, 21,400. And again, the elevations that will-
If you'd mark that as A6?
Uh, I already marked that as 2.
Are you already marking it? Okay, great.
So that'll be part of what we talk about on Tuesday, and, uh-
Back to the original.
Back to the front rendering. Uh, we do show the other views, um, they don't show as much. This would be, uh, from the corner where St. Peter's is. This would be the, the, the side of the, the fellowship hall and the back of the building.
Mark that as A6.
And this is the, the opposite of what I showed you before, uh, from the side street, um, looking at the back of the fellowship hall, or the parking lot side of the fellowship hall, and the, uh, the drive-up canopy here.
A7? Would that be the view from Reeve Street?
Yes, yeah, that's correct.
From Reeve Street, okay.
I'll go back to the back of this board that I put the elevations on.
A8?
And this is the, you know, the, the elevation that I was talking about earlier, um, down at the main intersection where the, the grade slopes down and, and gives us the, the issue with the, uh, with the height restriction.
Perfect. Any other exhibits?
Uh, no, that is it.
Okay. Mr. Campbell's available to the board for questions.
Any board questions? Uh, this isn't exactly his area, but what would the basement be used for?
Father or Mike?
You said that had the same-
I said it's-
That is the, uh, the classroom areas.
Yes, the classes.
And Father described earlier what those would be used for, the, the Saturday religious classes.
Yes, that's Saturday, 5, 1:30 till 4:45.
I thought I heard you refer to a basement, I thought, I thought it was something different. Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, what are the materials you're using?
Uh, it would be natural stone, uh, natural stone, but it would be, you know, for, for cost and structural reasons, it would be a, a thin natural stone. And again, they, they have connections to, uh, the areas where they immigrated from, and sources for a lot of the materials that we'll be using in the building.
What about the roof?
Uh, yeah, we haven't talked a great deal about that, have we? Yeah, we, I'm sorry, we have. Like I said, it's been seven or eight years and a lot of iterations, but we are talking about a, you know, a mission tile type roof, you know, whether that be slate, uh, there are metal alternatives for that.
It, it wouldn't be like an Eiffel or stamped concrete, it would be stone?
No, the building would not be, well, Eiffel would be the, the exterior facades, and it's, it's not going to be that.
Okay.
Uh, so it'll be, uh, a roof with some character, you know, what exact material that is, I don't think we have selected that yet.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Tom, the overall square footage of the building then is what? Do you have an approximate?
Uh, 21,400.
Okay. Yeah, I think I discovered the, um, the 35,000 is actually cited in the original application form, and I see kind of how it came off of, I think it's the size of one of the lots, and I think that just got carried through the application. So thanks for clarifying that.
Thank you.
Okay, if there are no more board questions, we'll open to the public. If anyone would like to ask the architect a question concerning his testimony, this is the time to do it. Now, C D1, so we'll close, and-
Mr. Chairman, as I understand the process, we've all talked about, Tuesday, our engineer, a representative of the church, Mr. Campbell, are going to meet at 10 a.m. and eye out any other engineering questions that there may be, or any other questions that there may be, so that, and then what we'll do is we'll stop now. We have our planner to justify the variances, but just in case the variances change as a result of that meeting, we should save her testimony. Her name is Beth McManus, she is here tonight, but we need to come back and finish the application after we have concurrence with the engineering and planning about what exactly is in front of us. So the question is, what works for you guys in August?
We need to set up a date.
I have one meeting in August, August 4th.
Yep, uh, the only concern I have about that is that's, this is, uh, July the 7th, and I don't know if staff has any idea of what kind of changes or engineering issues there may be. Is there enough time for Mr. Remo to make any changes?
I mean, I, I would suggest we, we move it to August 4th and, and see how it goes on Tuesday. I mean, it, I, I can't, I honestly don't know, I can't anticipate what those comments may or may not be, I mean, those would be from CME.
Right.
And I don't think the nature of my comments, I think it, they could probably be addressed through an exhibit to the board. And I don't think you'll have to have revised plans for, to address my comments. So I'd suggest, you know, if it meets your schedule, let's do August 4th, see how it goes on Tuesday. If it really doesn't go well, then you can adjourn it.
So, um, August 4th is a Thursday. I'm hoping to be at MIT, but I have very, uh, competent staff who can cover for me if I, if I can't make it back from Boston by the night meeting. How is August the 4th for Mr. Remo, Mr. Klein, Mr. Campbell? And Father, of course, is going to be there, all right? And I might be there, or, you know, depending if I can get back from Boston, so, um- Oh, and Beth? I'm sorry, Beth. And Beth is available.
How about, okay, we'll set it for that, but how about we extend the deadline for action then to September, end of September, just in case then-
Takes longer, yeah, just in case. So for the record, we are hereby consenting to an extension to September 1st?
Whatever. Well, do it after a meeting, right?
For September? We have September 15th, so it should be after September 15th.
We're hereby, for the record, extending our requesting, or providing an extension time to the board to September 16th, 2022.
We plan tentatively to hear this again August 4th.
Right, and there's no need for further notice or publication, Chairman?
No, there's no further notice, and for the general public, at that time, uh, we'll hear probably some additional engineering testimony and testimony from a planner. Public will have a chance to question both, and then the public will have an opportunity to make a statement at the end of all the testimony. That's what will happen, and again, there'll be no further notice sent to you in the mail or otherwise. August 4th.
Thank you, Chairman, and members.
Next on the agenda. Anxiously out there in the hall waiting. Okay, Devco ZBA 210011, use vari, de-use variances preliminary, final major site plan, height variance in which the applicant seeks to develop three-story apartment building at Two Hawthorne Drive, Somerset Block 194, lots 127 and 128, and the HBD zone. We'll take a five-minute recess for everybody to move in and out.
He what? Let's see.
Again, call the meeting back to order if everybody could get in and get a seat, and we'll get started. C D1? Testing one. I'm Ross. We'll be all set now, we can get started. This is, again, Devco ZBA twenty-one oh oh eleven.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Peter Lanford, Boris Golden, and Foley, appearing on behalf of the applicant. This is an application for a use variance in site plan approval to construct a three-story residential building at the intersection of Hamilton Street and Hawthorne Drive, the street address being two Hawthorne Drive. The site, for many years, housed an office building which was demolished, and we are now trying to construct a building which will require a D variance because we are requesting relief to not construct or use the first floor for commercial purposes. Your ordinance for the HBD district requires mixed-use buildings with commercial on the first floor and the residential units on the upper floors. For this building, we are seeking the relief to allow the building to be a hundred percent residential. We will present testimony in support of that variance. The building itself, as I indicated, would be a three-story building with fifteen units, nine one-bedroom apartments and six two-bedroom apartments. The application is pretty straightforward. I do have three witnesses this evening, plus Mr. Dominack, who is the liaison to the Hamilton Street Business District, and I intend to call him to ask him a few questions. I will start this evening with the testimony of Mr. Testa.
Please raise your right hand. You swear a testimony about to give me the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Testa, can you state your full name for the record, please?
My first name is Michael, last name Testa, T-E-S-T-A.
Mr. Testa, are you a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey?
I'm a licensed architect in good standing in the state of New Jersey.
And you've appeared before this board previously, as a matter of fact, presenting an application for a building on Hamilton Street previously?
Correct, it was five eighty-seven.
We accept those credentials.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before I ask Mr. Testa a few questions, I just want to make a preliminary statement. We submitted this application well over a year ago. We have had numerous meetings with staff concerning the design of the building. We recently submitted, I think, either our fourth or fifth rendition of the building. Based on my conversation with Mr. Healy, there are a few other changes he would recommend to the building, although I have not received those recommendations or a report from him. The last report was dated February. For the record, we understand that we will present the building. If there are modifications that Mr. Healy would like to see, we would be happy to meet with him after the, you know, subsequent to the approval, should the board decide to approve this to deal with the few tweaks to the building. Mr. Testa, can you have with you this evening an exhibit to show the building?
Yes, I do. The exhibits I want to present to the board are all of the exhibits you have in your board package except for one. We have a 3D color rendering, which I will show last. As Mr. Lanford indicated, we have a three-story residential building. Ground floor is three hundred, three thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven square feet. The second and third floor are both six thousand two hundred and forty-six square feet. On the ground level, we have Hamilton Street at the bottom of the drawing, Hawthorne Drive on the right side of the drawing. As you can see, the residential units are abutting the Hamilton Street facade. We've modified this floor plan to have a common lower lobby and an upper lobby. The lower lobby, you'll see how it functions from the exterior with the exterior with the grade. The grade slopes from the high point here on the left side down approximately three feet in the lower corner, and then back up the site again. So, grading-wise, we have some site difficulties that we worked through with the residential units. The back of the property where the parking is, we have parking underneath a portion of the building, handicap spots, as you can see here, which is the main access into the building. All handicap accessibility goes through the main entrance at this facade, so that's where all our handicap parking is. We have an elevator that's going to take you all three floors. All of the units, all fifteen, fifteen units are handicap accessible. The building will be fully sprinkled. We've also provided a bike rack at the back corner under the building as well for the occupants. The first floor also consists of two one-bedroom units here and here, and a two-bedroom unit in the corner. The second and third floor consists of six units, a mix of one-bedroom and two-bedroom units. We have the corners of the buildings, again, you'll see on the facades, as living spaces with large windows, a lot of natural light, large bedroom spaces, and again, completely handicap accessible. We have self-contained heating and air conditioning units, as well as self-contained laundry, laundry facility inside the building. The roof of the building will have a flat roof with a mansard around the building screening the flat section, and that flat section will be where all the rooftop condensers will be. There'll be nothing on the ground. So, anything on that roof will be screened by the mansard roof, as well as the tower elements. And then, as far as the facade, probably I'll work with the rendering here. So, we might want to label this one.
Can we have that one say one?
Say one. Is today's date okay, sir? Afraid to move the easel, it's going to fall. So, as you can see the elevation here, this is the corner Hawthorne on the right and Hamilton in front of you. You can see in the elevation is the site slopes from a high spot down to a low spot and then back up again. The building facade, we worked with staff, with a bunch of generations. One of it was trying to integrate a more commercial look into the building. Based on the slope of the site, we really had a difficult time doing that, so what we kind of resolved, this low bottom corner here, which is a low point of the site, creating a storefront element in there, which would be one of the lounge areas inside the building. So, to give some type of a commercial storefront to the facade that's at the corner. We have tower elements on each of the corners of the building, and an essentially located accentated element in the middle of the facade. The facade projects in and out, so that way it's not a flat railroad car or box-type structure. We have horizontal siding, as well as cedar shake-type siding. The siding is used in the pediments up top here, tops of the tower. We use AZAC trim horizontal elements to break the tower up, as well as breaking the facade up as well. The trim goes around all of the windows, as well as shutters accentuating the bump-out parts on the facade. And as you can see, the lower portion of the building is all cultured stone to give a texture to appear a more durable surface on the street level. The windows along the storefront, very similar to what we did in five eighty-seven Hamilton with the residential units. One of the concerns of the board at the time was the safety of the windows with pedestrians walking by. One of the, the solution that was approved at that meeting was to provide safety glass on those windows, laminated safety glass. So, laminated safety glass is, it's two sheets of glass with a piece of plastic film in between it, so it's very difficult to break through and get in. The building has two means of egress. The windows are not required for egress, but are as large as egress windows, if not larger, to create more light and air throughout the entire spaces. The building materials and facade is consistent around all four sides. Again, we have the mansard roof, you could see in the two lower sections, these tower elements here, and that conceals the equipment that would be on the roof. The height area, the height requirement in the area is forty feet. Since the site slopes, we took a mean height. This is the highest point here, which is about forty-three feet, three inches. According to the business district ordinance, a building is a corner building, and it allows for higher building heights. The building, again, that we did on five eighty-seven was a corner street as well, where we used similar tower elements to achieve the accentuation of the corners and to give it a more prominent appearance. So, the highest point here is forty-three. These are about forty-two at the towers. And that's pretty much designed, again, to accentuate the different parts of the building and to conceal the rooftop equipment. And that pretty much concludes my testimony.
A couple of quick questions, Mr. Testa. This building is basically at the entrance to the Hamilton Street Business District as you're exiting the city of New Brunswick, correct?
Correct.
And at the present time, are there any commercial uses around the subject property?
Other than the building that was there, that was torn down, not that I'm, not that I've seen and am aware of. There's residential properties facing this building here, there's residential properties on Hawthorne, single-family style homes. So, that's why the design of the building, we tried to keep in context with the adjacent properties. I can't see the single-family homes arose, disappearing. We try not to go with a contemporary. Again, discussions with the board, guidance, and trying to resolve the overall appearance as being part of the gateway into this area was very sensitive, and we worked very hard with them to try to retrieve a successful facade.
Okay, and then also, just for the benefit of the board, when you started this project initially, did you in fact look at putting commercial on the first floor, and what were the problems associated with that?
Well, the first floor, if we had a flat surface like most retail buildings would have, it's easy to walk in and out of storefronts. Again, there's approximately a three-foot drop from one corner to the other. I've done retail buildings where you have sloping sites, where we've stepped the floors. Those are typically much larger buildings, so we're able to have larger tenant spaces, easier to rent. If we had to put doors, probably we'd only have two or three tenant spaces along here. You'd wind up with four and five hundred square foot tenant spaces, would become difficult to rent, and it would also have an odd appearance, very choppy along the base of the building.
Now, the rendering that the board is looking at shows the building in basically beige tones and browns, is that correct?
We have a brown mixture of stone on the bottom. The tower and center elements are actually a white color, and the interior color is a taupe or beige color, all earth tones.
Okay, and those colors are going to be the colors that the building will be constructed in? We're not going to make it a blue building, a purple building, or anything like that? Those are the actual colors that the client intends to construct?
No, and that's the intention. See, and this is a design tool even for us, not just to show the board members to get a real feel. After looking at the first go of this, we modified the colors and resented back to the owner for approval, because we get to see it come to life as well, and we see things that we can improve upon. There's, in the render, as you can see, the windows towards the higher end of the site, they kept them all the same window heights, but in this area here, the window sills do get too close to the sidewalk. After seeing it now three dimensionally, that's something we would address, where we'd bring those window sills up at least a foot above grade. Again, they don't need to be egressed, but we'd like them having as large as possible. I think that would be appropriate solution to that condition.
Okay, thank you. I have no further questions.
Anything from the board? Do you need to open to the public?
There is a member of the public here.
I'm sorry, I guess we do have one. Questions for the architect? My eyes are failing, it's getting late.
I'm adjacent, in the adjacent building to this one here on Hawthorne Drive. I got this notice approximately a month ago for the June second board meeting, but I'm glad that it was postponed to today, because I couldn't make it last time. I just had a couple of minor questions. On this project notice, it indicates that a new two-way driveway opposite to the existing break in the middle, which is the glassy island. But it's not, it's not opposite to the existing break in the middle. It's moved further up towards Hamilton Street.
Mr. Heinrich, let me, over here.
Yes.
So, there's going to be additional testimony from an engineer and maybe another? Just right now, the chairman and the board are looking for any questions you have of the architect and the testimony he just gave at this point.
Not, not as far as architecture is concerned.
Okay, so if you have additional questions, again, there's going to be somebody else. I think that question's going to be more for the site engineer.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
Thank you. And we'll close to the public, and next...
Mr. Sadowski.
Just raise your right hand. You swear a testimony about to give me the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your full name for the record, please.
Ronald J. Sadowski, S-A-D-O-W-S-K-I.
Licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Sadowski has also testified before this board, so will you accept him?
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sadowski, you prepared the site plan, which is the subject of this application?
Yes, I did.
And can you briefly describe the subject property as it is today, and also the surrounding land uses to the subject property?
Yes, currently...
Submitted to the board.
This is actually just a color, a site version of the landscaping plan, which is in the site plan package. Would you like me to...
Yeah, mark it, mark it, eight-two.
Eight-two.
And if, if the easel doesn't fall over, probably fine. No, I was going to say, can you move it a little bit closer so that the people at this end of the board can see it a little bit better? Thank you. And if it collapses, I'll take the blame.
Okay. Yeah, currently, there is a two-story office building along the westerly portion of the property with an access onto Hawthorne, which we are demolishing as part of this application. The surrounding uses are residential, single-family, multifamily apartment buildings as well. We are in the Hamilton Business District, along Hamilton Street, but predominantly in the perimeter is the R seven zone, residential zone.
Okay, and can you describe to the board very briefly the site plan? How are we getting onto the site? Where's the parking? And review that with the board?
Yes, we are utilizing the existing curb cut that's on Hawthorne. Hawthorne is actually a divided road, one-way in each direction. We will be sliding the existing cut in that island to help facilitate the alignment of the parking on our site. There will be a two-way entrance off of Hawthorne onto the property, along with twenty-five parking spaces, two of which will be van-accessible ADA, and four electric vehicle spaces. A portion of the parking will be located underneath the second and third floors of the apartment building. The apartment building will be located directly on the property line of Hamilton Street and off of Hawthorne because of the radius in the property line. All of the parking, again, is in the back of the lot. We have landscaping along the perimeter of the parking lot to help assist in light trespass from vehicles parking in the lot. We have a dumpster for trash and recycling collection. We have a bike rack, which is underneath the overhang of the building, which will stay dry. And then also along Hamilton and Hawthorne, we've implemented the Hamilton Streetscape, which includes decorative trees, decorative lighting, a trash, and recycling receptacles, and also a bench. We've also included some on-street, there's four, I'm sorry, three on-street parking spaces on Hawthorne Drive.
Okay, is there a fence being proposed as part of this project?
Yes, there is. Along the, I want to say the... Yes, there is, along the, I want to say the northern property line, adjacent to the existing property, yes.
Okay. So there'll be a fence on one side or more than one side?
Well, there's an existing fence now on the west side.
Okay. And if that fence is, because it's an old fence, needs to be repaired or upgraded, that will be repaired or upgraded?
Yes, it will.
Okay. And then there'll be a new fence to the rear of the property as you're looking to the property from Hamilton Street?
That's correct. We'll make the fence all uniform. That's correct.
Okay. Now, you mentioned something about the break in the curb on Hawthorne Drive and aligning it with the curb cut. Can you explain that?
Yes, currently, the location of that curb cut, if you were to pull into the site, we would hit these parking spaces here to the north. So what we were proposing is to slide that curb cut on Hawthorne down, I went down meaning to the south, about ten feet. It was brought to my attention that people use that curb cut or that island to make a U-turn, being that U-turns are not permitted on Hamilton. So what we were proposing to do is to keep the northern portion of the existing curb cut and just on the southern side, where we need it to align with our new access, we would then create the new southern portion of the curb cut. So instead of a twenty-four-foot wide aisle and maybe thirty-four feet of a curb cut to allow for people to make U-turns, because I've been told when buses try to navigate that U-turn, they run over the island. So to help assist with that, we would extend that opening by another ten feet, which would help the vehicles making the U-turns and would then also facilitate vehicles entering the new property, the new development.
Would we be doing anything to the island itself?
Other than repairing some of the curb that's been beaten up, no, nothing else.
Okay. So the location of the island does not change?
No, not at all.
Okay. Now, you mentioned the dumpster. Is the dumpster going to be enclosed?
Yes, it will be enclosed, see a new block, which will, with the finishes that'll match the building, and there'll also be a solid gate in the front of it, yes.
Is there any lighting being proposed to handle the parking lot and illuminate the parking lot?
Yes, there are. There are pole-mounted lights that are proposed along the perimeter as part of the design and part of the condition of approval. We will make certain that the lighting intensities meet the ordinance, the light ordinance, and also that there are no, there is no light trespass onto the adjacent properties.
Okay. Is there any stormwater management required with this project?
Yes, we are increasing the overall runoff on the property. And what we have done is we've implemented an underground stormwater system using percolation slash recharge to handle the additional runoff.
Now, can you review the zone requirements or are there any variances that are being generated as a result of this application or do we meet the bulk requirements of the ordinance?
We meet all the bulk requirements. The one issue potentially is the height of the building being the maximum permitted at forty feet. We're at forty-three point two-five feet, but again, we are a corner lot, which we are allowed to therefore exceed.
But with respect to all of the other parts of the front yard, rear yard, side yard, setbacks, and previous coverage, we are in compliance with the ordinance?
One hundred percent in compliance.
Okay. Is there an issue with respect to the number of parking spaces?
Being that we have electric vehicle spaces on the property, we are allowed to reduce the required parking by ten percent. So for this development, without electric vehicle spaces, we would need twenty-eight spaces. The ten percent reduction gets us to twenty-five point two. We have twenty-five parking spaces on the property.
Okay. Thank you. I have no further questions.
Anything from the board?
I'm sorry, I forgot. There was a staff report generated in conjunction with this application back in February of this year by the Township Consulting Engineer C and B. Have you had an opportunity to review that report?
I have.
And in the report, there are some requested modifications to the plan. Can you make all of those modifications?
Yes.
To the plan and in any way substantially alter the plan?
They will not.
Okay. There was also a report from Mr. Healy dated February ninth of this year. Have you reviewed that report?
Yes, I have.
And to the extent that the report addresses engineering issues, can you make all of the changes requested by Mr. Healy?
Well, the one issue that I did want to bring up at the meeting is the Hamilton Business District and the Streetscape requirements. We show planter boxes, three of them, along Hamilton Street, but because of the amount of underground gas lines that are in the area, we felt that it would not be wise to install trees in that area. So we have the soldier pavers in those areas that would represent where those three trees would be. Mr. Healy has asked if perhaps we could come up with another plan where we would put those trees. And what we had discussed amongst the client and the professionals is perhaps putting planter boxes, which would just sit on top of concrete pads to lure out the three trees.
Okay. And just for the record, what is the problem with putting trees in?
The gas lines that are underneath the existing sidewalk in Hamilton Street are concerned are the root systems of the trees and the impact they may have on the gas lines.
Do you know if that gas line, does this only affect this property, do you know? Does it then go into the middle of the street?
That I do not know.
Okay. Do you happen to know how deep the gas line is?
No.
Okay. I mean, obviously, we're not going to have them plant trees if it's a safety hazard. So what I would suggest is why don't we have a conversation with our engineer?
Okay.
Maybe some of those questions should be asked and discussed. And obviously, if there's an issue where, I mean, if it's not very deep, then obviously some other solution will have to be looked at. So, and planter boxes may be the appropriate solution.
Okay.
So if the board is agreeable, if the board ultimately decides to approve it, I think that can be something that could be a condition to work out with staff.
Sounds good. I have no further questions of Mr. Sadowski.
Okay, now, anything from the board?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a few questions. And just to clarify, you had said that since it's a corner lot, the building height's forty. And I think you said since it's a corner, we're forty-three point something, but since it's a corner lot, that it doesn't apply or something like that? But I just wanted to clarify that it does apply, but I think your justification for the variance is that there's an architectural feature at the corner and maybe your planner's going to speak to that. But it's not that if you're at a corner, the forty-foot doesn't apply?
Understood.
Okay. I just wanted to-
I misspoke, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to make sure it was clear for the record.
If you want to call, I looked at that, it doesn't, it allows you to go above forty feet if you have a building at the corner, if there are features at the corner. It doesn't say you need a variance. It says you can go above forty feet. If you want to call it a variance, we can call it a variance, but if you look at the Hamilton Street Business District ordinance, it says you can go above forty feet at a corner building.
Okay. I have, in the meantime, I'll look up, I'll look the ordinance. I haven't looked at this in a while, but with the approval of the board, but it doesn't say it's a variance. Okay, I got you. It says you can, okay, that's not, okay, I got it. So I think my, I think my point still stands. I mean, I think the ordinance doesn't say you can go up to forty-four feet if you're at a corner, but it's, I think it encourages certain architectural features at the corner and it says, well, you might go above. So I think you still need to relieve from the board. And again, I think your testimony is the architecture, you've incorporated these corner features into the architecture of the building. And I'm sure Mr. Bryan's going to opine about the consistency of that with the design standards of the Hamilton Streetszone, and I'm sure he's going to have some testimony that justifies the variance to the board. So we'll hear that when he comes up. I do actually, if you don't mind, I do have a question of the architect. And that is, do you have any plan for incorporating, are you going to have any signage for the building?
We're not anticipating signage since there aren't retail spaces. There may be a sign for the name of the building. I don't have anything in the plans for that other than just the street number on the building.
Okay. Okay. So our design standards, we'll talk about that as well. So I guess at the appropriate time, when you come up with a plan, we'll have to take a look at that.
Yeah, we definitely will work with you as to location, if you wanted to have goose neck lighting on it, to be consistent with the style of architecture or internally illuminate it, we would work with you, Mark, on that aspect of it. I'd also like to take this moment to clarify something. Peter had indicated nine two-bedrooms and one, I'm sorry, nine one-bedrooms and six two-bedrooms. When we revised the first floor plan, in order to create that additional communal space, we wound up losing or converting a two-bedroom into a one-bedroom. So just for record purposes, we have ten one-bedroom units and five two-bedroom units. I just wanted to put that on the record, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, we'll open to the public. Would you like to ask him any questions?
All right. So I always spoken with this gentleman about that cut in the center, central island, you know, school buses turn there every day and they don't have enough space, so they go over the grass. So by allowing to keep the cut in the center aisle over there and extend it for your needs, then this problem will be solved. We don't have to reseed the grass every year. Now, there was a sign over there that got knocked out and disappeared. It was a no, no parking here at the corner, which started on my property and they meant the corner of Hawthorne and Hamilton. Now, from what I understand, they have requested on-street parking over there.
We are showing it if there is a township ordinance or if the police decide to post it for no parking, then there won't be any parking.
Well, there was a, there was a sign for no parking over there, got knocked out and it disappeared after a while.
Okay.
So, so I don't know, you get me?
In order for the township to put up a no parking sign anywhere, they have to adopt an ordinance. So we will look, if there's an ordinance in place, then there will continue to be no parking.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, now, you also proposed modification to the curbs. Now, is that the street curbs or the median?
Well, there's going to be curb replacement along Hamilton and Hawthorne, along the property frontages. And where there's damage or in need of repair as part of the reconstruction of the access for Hawthorne, we will replace the curb there, yes, and match the pavement.
Okay. You also showed me on the photo over there that you're planning to grade towards, you're planning to grade upwards towards Hawthorne Drive?
We're going to maintain the grading as it exists today. There is a steep-
There is no grade. The grading is not graded, so there's always a surface runoff.
Well, we've regraded the parking lot to conform with township standards so that there is no ponding on the site. There's always positive drainage. We have that two-hour underground system, yes.
Because you looked at, you looked at the curb that's on Hawthorne Drive?
But again-
It's non-existent. It's either flush or buried.
The curb will all be replaced and have a minimum four-inch reveal along the county road, yes.
But presently, there is also an evergreen screen between my property and the proposed property. Those are mature trees. And nowhere does it say that you're going to take those out and replace them, but you know, whatever your needs are. And you're also going to erect vinyl fence?
There'll be a vinyl fence?
Is that necessary?
Yes, along the northern property line, we are proposing a vinyl fence, solid vinyl fence, along with some plantings. These plantings are the ones that you say exist. And if they exist, we will just add to the existing row of plantings where they may be bare. What we're looking to do is to have more of a solid row of plantings along with the fence as, on the north side and then also on the west side of the property.
Yeah, the fencing on that, on that, on the other side is completely broken.
Right.
So I don't know whose fence that is.
Well, we will replace with a solid vinyl fence to match the balance.
So are you saying you don't want a fence? I'm a little confused.
No, no, they're both commercial, commercial properties. I, you know, if we don't need a vinyl fence, I prefer not to have a vinyl fence on my side, but they can definitely put the vinyl fence in the back as the fence is broken over there, you know, just for aesthetical purposes and probably safety also.
So again, just to be clear, what they're proposing on their site, on their site, not yours, is a six-foot-high vinyl fence on their site and a row of evergreen trees. So you're saying you-
There is already evergreen trees over there. Of course, they have to be, I trimmed it on my side because it came over on my side. I trimmed it on my side. It's not trimmed on their side. So they can trim it and save those trees because they're evergreen and they absorb light and sound, so it should not be a problem if that can-
So I think Mr. Sadowski said that he can look into whether that those can stay. I think it might depend on the grading and where the new curbs going in-
That's right.
And where those trees are.
Absolutely.
So I think, if I can, Mr. Sadowski, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you'd say you'll look into whether those can be saved. If they can't though, then the screen is going to be the six-foot-high vinyl fence and the row of evergreen, new evergreen trees to replace what comes down. So look into whether any of those trees can be saved.
Can be salvaged, yes.
So again, my biggest concern was the U-turn that trucks make, you know? If you can leave the existing cut in the road and extend it into theirs, that would be a win-win situation for everybody.
Yeah, I think you bring up a good point as far as that parking. I think the reason why the applicant is proposing parking there is just the overall goal, whenever we have an application on Hamilton Street, is to be try to maximize not only the parking onsite, but also try to maximize the on-street parking. But I think in this situation, we have, you know, a scenario where buses are using that to turn around. And if there's, and if there's an existing no parking restriction, then those additional on-street spaces, you know, may not, may have to go, not just because of the restriction, but if also if those spaces are going to impede those, you know, movements, they may have to go.
This is what happens.
So I think it's a good point and they'll have to look into that. We'll look into that with the applicant and staff.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Mr. Dominic?
Raise your right hand. You swear the testimony about to give me the truth, the whole truth?
I do.
Mr. Dominic, what is your occupation?
I am currently the Township's Economic Development Director and for the purposes of tonight's hearing, I am also the Executive Director of the Hamilton Street Business District.
As the Executive Director, does the Hamilton Street Business District review plans that, before they come to the board?
Yes, they review every plan that is in the HB district and offers their opinions and their feelings typically through Mark's reports to make it easier so they don't have a separate report.
And in this instance, when we submitted the plans to the Hamilton Street Business District, as indicated both by Mr. Testa and myself, there were various iterations of the plan and changes and improvements to the plan, were there not?
Yes, and to clarify, all of the architectural comments were from the Hamilton Street Board. They go through Mark as the conduit because it's just easier because he typically deals with all the planning. So we use Mark's report, but all the comments were from the HDB Board. There are some additional minor comments that you mentioned that we will get to you, that we will work with you to incorporate.
Okay. And also in reviewing the plan, the board saw that there was no commercial being proposed in conjunction with this application. Did the board have an opinion with respect to that aspect of the-
Uh, did the board have an opinion with respect to that aspect of the application?
The board unanimously and adamantly supported having only residential. Uh, as most of you ride up and down the street, there are thousands of square feet of vacant, uh, retail commercial on the street. And to add additional space, especially in a relatively small building at the end of the street, the, the Hamilton Street Board felt would be inappropriate.
Thank you. I have no further questions. Any board questions?
Well, I'll ask a question that I know the answer to since I was in the meeting, um, but it may help the board. And so, you know, I was in the meetings with the Hamilton Street, um, zoning subcommittee with Vince. The, um, proposal to have the, kind of the commercial-looking aspect at the corner, um, that came from some suggestions from the Hamilton Street group?
Yes, that, that was a very important component that we appreciate them in incorporating because it gives the same feel of it being commercial. But at the same time, we don't have empty store space.
All right.
Well, that's it for me, yes, sorry.
Okay. Open to the public. Would you like to ask Mr. Dominic any questions? Okay, we'll close and go to the planner.
Mr. O'Brien?
You swear the testimony about to give me the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. O'Brien is a licensed professional planner who has testified before this board on a regular basis. I would offer his testimony this evening as a professional planner. I ask the board to accept it.
That's fine.
Mr. O'Brien, you are familiar with A, the zoning ordinance of the Township of Franklin?
I am.
The master plan of the Township of Franklin?
I am.
And the Hamilton Street Business District ordinance?
Also, I am.
Okay. Uh, if we can, since it's sort of getting on in the evening, can you briefly take the board through what your analysis was and why we're here and the conclusion that you have reached with respect to this application?
Certainly, and I am acutely aware, Chairman, that I'm the only thing standing between you and that door right now. So, um, I believe that I can go to conclusory statements on this with some factual backup. And I'll be more than happy to enlarge my testimony upon any questions of the board or of staff. As the board knows, any application for a use variance, a D1 variance, has got to show you that there are unique properties that would allow that variance to be granted. And in this particular case, the unique properties involve the Hamilton Street District Plan, which was adopted in 2015. There are a number of goals to that plan, such as a pedestrian-friendly environment, uh, one that incorporates walking, shopping, living, encouraging students, young people to live in this particular area, and trying to create buildings that accomplish those things. Over the years, this board has approved a number of buildings along Hamiltons, along Hamilton that you've seen, uh, a few of them you've approved. I've worked with Mr. Lanford on that did not have commercial because it was felt the commercial was not appropriate in those locations due to the existing commercial. So in terms of unique, uh, what's unique to this project is meeting and conforming to the requirements of the Hamilton Street Business District and providing that walkability and livability without providing the commercial aspect because the commercial aspect has already been provided in the existing retail restaurants and other commercial areas. Excuse me. We're all aware of what COVID did to our economy starting two and a half years ago, uh, which killed a lot of retail, a lot of restaurants. And the ones that is, that have, that have survived is retail that is absolutely necessary for our daily living, places we have to go to to get stuff, or places that are destinations where we want to go and get a particular good or a particular service. That's what exists along Hamilton Street now. And it doesn't make any sense for this application to put an empty space there, excuse me, to join the other vacant spaces that Mr. Dominic has just attested to. The proposed building is right-sized for this lot. No variances are requested, um, in terms of parking or bulk standards. The application meets the land use law because it does meet goals A, to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in the state in a manner which will promote the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. Item B, secure safety from fire and other disasters. G, provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of uses. L, to promote a desirable visual environment. And M, to encourage coordination of the various public and private procedures to the more efficient use of the land. And that meets, this application meets those goals of the municipal land use law by providing much-needed current housing that is code-compliant to current code. So it will be very, very safe, to capitalize on its proximity to New Brunswick, and will attract students and young professionals. It meets the goals of the master plan, not only in the Hamilton Street Business District, uh, where it does say, revitalize the Hamilton Street corridor by encouraging appropriate private investment and redevelopment in, in the area that is consistent with the township's vision for the area as an attractive pedestrian-friendly main street area. And also the master plan goal of maintain the diversity of housing, but encourage infill and stabilization of current residential areas rather than continuing sprawl patterns of development. This application also meets the negative criteria, which you're aware was one of the prongs needed for a D1 variance. Uh, providing much-needed housing here, I do not see as a negative for the township, uh, but rather as a positive, a new tax-ratable. Uh, construction will utilize the area supply houses. Workers will frequent area businesses. And the residents will add to the economic vitality of Hamilton Street. So in terms of conclusion, uh, we've met the uniqueness. We've met the special reasons for the municipal land use law, the positive criteria by discussing the, uh, municipal master plan. We've met the negative criteria. And lastly, I would conclude that I believe this application can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without substantial impairment to the zone plan and the zoning ordinance. Welcome any questions?
I just have one question as referenced by Mr. Healy, the issue of the corner, the building at a corner and the height and whether a variance is or may or may not be needed. And if it is, do you have an opinion as to the grant of the variance?
The Hamilton Street Business District, uh, regulations do say that the board can consider, uh, options when it comes to corner properties and corner buildings and taking into account the various fenestrations that are given. Uh, they can grant exceptions to the height requirement of forty feet. Whether that's a waiver, whether that's an ordinance, I would leave that to the zoning officer or Mr. Healy. But whatever it is, I believe that you've seen the plan in front of you, the rendering of the building, and I think that's a very attractive building. And I think that answers the question as to whether or not the board can grant that height exception, whatever it may be, a variance or waiver or whatever. And I think that's within the board's power.
Thank you. I have no further questions of Mr. O'Brien. Anything from the board?
What, what is the building height again?
Forty, forty-three, 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 three. Go up by three, three.
So the language is, such building may be designed to have additional height and architectural embellishments relating to the location on a corner lot if deemed appropriate by the board. So, you know, the height requirement's forty feet, right, period. So anything above forty is a variance, period. Doesn't say you can go up to forty-four feet. So it is a variance. But again, as I said before, and you just testified, there is language that says that you're supposed to have these architectural treatments at the corner. And the board, if they're satisfied with the testimony and the, and the architectural that were presented by the board, I mean, to the board, you might, may find it appropriate to grant that. And if so, I think it would fall under the C2. You know, it's not a hardship. It, it is a C2, you know, it could be, maybe a C2 variance because it's furthering the purpose of zoning and furthering the design standards of the zone to meet certain design standards. But it is a variance.
What he said and the benefits outweigh the detriments of the C2.
Okay, any other questions? Open to the public. Anyone have a question or a statement? Okay, then we'll close. Want to say anything, Mr. Lanford?
Very, very briefly. Um, as I stated at the beginning of, of this application, uh, although this is a, a very small site, uh, it is a very important site in that it is really the start of the Hamilton Street Business District. We have spent, uh, a great deal of time with staff trying to create a building which is the gateway into Hamilton Street. Uh, I think we've achieved that as best as we can, subject to some additional tweaks that may be worked out between Mr. Testa and Mr. Healy. Uh, with respect to the height variance, uh, I think as indicated both by Mr. Healy and Mr. O'Brien, it is supportable because it does give the building character at that corner. Uh, we do meet all of the other requirements of the zone. And I would respectfully request that the board grant the D variance to waive the, uh, commercial requirements on the first floor, grant the site plan approval, and grant the height variance. Thank you.
Anything from the board?
Mr. Chairman, let me just outline a few things just because there were a few changes made at the hearing. Um, so it was clarified that it's now ten bedroom, uh, ten one-bedroom and five two-bedroom. Building height's forty-three point three. I think some of the, uh, conditions, potential conditions that have been discussed, obviously, compliance with all staff reports. Um, they're going to work with the, uh, HPD zoning committee on some additional architectural, uh, adjustments, minor tweaks to the architectural treatment. Um, the, uh, issue of that island was brought up. I don't believe the plan showed the existing trees. So I think we're going to have to, you know, look to see, you know, if they need, yeah. Are they all staying? Okay, so what we've heard is that all of the, all of the trees that are in that island are staying. Okay. Um, and then we have to look at the, the parking on, on Hawthorne and whether those existing spaces or the proposed spaces can stay or not based on the conversation that was had. So those are the con, the conditions that I, I have in my notes.
I would put those all in the form of a motion and add, uh, the discussion on whether the trees need to be planted in pots.
Yes, that issue as well as the issue, um, the screening, um, adjoining, um, Dr. Heinrich's property, you know, with the, um, preference to keep the tree, the existing trees if possible. If not, it'll be as proposed, uh, a combination of fencing and proposed trees.
And move to approve the application with those conditions that we talked about. Any discussion? Okay.
Richard Pocana?
Yes.
Bill Reese?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Yes.
Basim Vadas?
Yes.
Raz Khan?
Yes.
And Chairman Thomas?
Yes, I think it's good to get some customers for the, uh, other retail that's there. Good luck with it. And is there a motion to adjourn?
Thank you.
We need adjourned. Everyone have a good weekend.